Okay, so are we on it? We're recording?
I'm not going to, unless you really would want to.
The fans, what about the fan base?
She's not going live? Got dressed up for nothing?
No.
It's on demand, but unless you really would want to.
On demand.
On demand, I'd like to know who demands it. I know, I'm kidding. Alrighty, let's get started. I gotta get my thing up here, hold on.
So Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just a notification that I am conflicted out of SME, which is the second to last on there.
Yeah.
And there are no conflicts on the last thing on our agenda, so I'm going to be leaving before SME, trying to make a vote.
Okay. I just know that I'm not going to be here next month.
Okay.
So I don't know if that affects that, but I just am going to have to.
And, yeah, so if Susan is sitting on the last one and there's some...
I don't think there's going to be a problem with that one.
Well, we have.
Mark.
Yeah, and you're not... What about the Citizens' Warren articles? You don't want to discuss those with us?
That's more for information.
Okay.
You can discuss them as you wish, but it's more informational for you.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. Okay, so, I'm still not ready, but I'm all straight. There we go. So this is the regularly scheduled December 9th, Town of Nantucket zoning board of appeals meeting. Can I get a approval of the agendas amended?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
How about the approval of the minutes of November 13th, 2014? Anybody want to go there? Michael makes a motion, any...
Second.
Kiram, any further discussion? No. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so do we have to do anything with 4614, the withdrawal without prejudice?
The people who were SME members just need to approve.
Okay, so it was myself, Susan Kiram, Mark Por, and Michael Angelostro will be voting on this. So, yeah, applicant has asked to withdraw without prejudice. Any... Do you have any issue with that? Somebody like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, any further discussion? No. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so I didn't sit on the next one. I don't know who was chairing it. Was it Lisa or Michael?
I'm not sure. I can't remember.
Tac 3? So anyway, I'm not sitting.
Okay.
So I sat in for somebody.
You were on it definitely last time because you brought up the garage. You were in the minutes.
Yeah.
Like Michael, did Michael conflict out at some point?
I sat in for who?
Oh, this is from last week and I wasn't here.
Right. So what do we do in that case? So Jeff started it. He wasn't here the last meeting.
Yes.
I sat. So, then I had sat in the first meeting also. Excuse me. I was present at the first meeting to hear about sitting in the audience. I sat on it the second meeting because Jeff wasn't here. So it was more appropriate that I sit on it?
Yes.
Yes.
Was Jeff in the minutes from last year?
I haven't. I think Michael should probably continue to sit on it.
I think it's appropriate that you sit. Are we ready to go?
Yeah, this is application, sorry about that. 53-14 Tac 3 LLC for the applicant.
I have a revised plan. It's exactly the same as what you would have seen in your packet, except the fact that Ellen noticed that we have not corrected the ground cover based upon the changes we've made.
With the removal of the garage?
With the removal of the garage, exactly. We, based upon the comments that we received at the last meeting, we removed the garage from the project in its entirety. And we are now providing what I think is the maximum number of parking spaces that could possibly fit on the site. Not all conforming, in fact, there are only three of the seven spaces that are fully dimensionally conforming with the 9x20. There are three others that are short and one other that is short and narrow. But this is, again, the maximum that we can provide. We also, the other major change that we have made, or clarification perhaps, is that we are not proposing any retail use in the building. In fact, what the commercial space is going to be will be the management area for this property and the adjacent property that's in common ownership. And that, and we are willing to have a condition placed in the decision that that will be its use in the absence of further relief from the board. As you know, there are, what is it, eight or nine dwelling units on the adjacent property?
Eighteen, huh? Eighteen?
Ten, yeah. Ten dwelling units on the adjacent property which is in common ownership with this property. And this will be the management office for that activity. You have the memo that I prepared that sets forth these changes. Again, I think that we've eliminated the concern that there might be some intent to retail use in the commercial area. The residential use, which had previously been one dwelling unit with four bedrooms, now becomes two dwelling units with a total of four bedrooms. They'll be larger units, but the total number of bedrooms doesn't change. And the number of bedrooms drives the number of parking spaces that technically required under the, in the context of the Duplex residential property. As we've pointed out, well, there's no change in the configuration of the building as we proposed. What we are doing is putting it on its own foundation and it'll bring the first floor up to elevation 11, as we now need to do. And the existing structure above its present, above the present first floor location is 21.7 feet, that's going to go to 23.4, which brings us up to the elevation of 34.4 above grade that we're requesting relief from. I think that's pretty much it. I, as far as here, would be again along with Chip Webster on the architect of the project. And we can answer any further questions and further discussion if you want to.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any immediate questions?
Let's have a comment. Again, this is going from an existing height of 21.7 feet. That's the existing height now?
From the first floor.
First floor.
25.2.
Yeah.
From the grade.
Okay, from the grade to the tallest peak, how high is it now?
25.2 feet. It's on the far left of that drawing. Keep scrolling.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So it's going from 25... Is there a roof walk on it now?
Yes.
So it's going from 25.2 to 34, so it's going up nine feet plus the roof walk.
Seven and a half feet.
25 existing.
Point two to 32.
I thought it was 34.
34.4.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the...
So it's going up nine feet plus the roof walk.
Yeah, 9.2.
Is that...
I think it's...
Can it be any lower than that one feet off the grade?
Not to confl... Not in conformance with the current Massachusetts building codes and for construction within the flood zone, because it's within the velocity zone. Or I can get back into that again if you'd like.
No, it just, you can't, what you're saying is you just can't do it. To do the renovation on this, it must be brought up.
That's right, that's right. They're exceeding the 50% rule, so in other words, the structure needs to conform with current building codes. And what that means essentially, typically, I think what you're more familiar with is a still water flood zone that sets a minimum elevation for a threshold. In this case, because it's been as part of the changes that happened in June from FEMA, this property's been put into what's known as a velocity zone. So now they're in the mass amendments to the building code, there's a requirement for a clear space below your lowest structural member. So now you're, it's an elevation plus a clear space plus your floor system, so you get to that first floor. So that's where that comes in.
So the minimum it could be is the 32.7?
Uh, that would be if you were to take the existing structure and plop it on, but then given the architectural elements and the HTC design is where the, basically, they're asking for 1.7 feet higher than if you were to have the existing structure, you know, for the renovated structure.
Right.
I'm just curious, how do you get up there to make a handicap?
If you notice on the site plan, there is, we've changed the steps so that that doesn't answer your accessible question, but then you'd have to have a lift.
Yeah, so you're not doing the ramp. The drawings that are in the file show ramp, but that's not part of the...
The latest drawing that I submitted...
Well, not your drawing, I'm sorry. They just say...
Right, right.
That was early.
So the HTC likes the design because they approved it, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, I think the parking situation is a huge improvement. Getting rid of the garage is a huge improvement. Having the spaces, you know, marginally smaller, what are you going to do? I mean, at least they're trying to provide some parking there. So overall, I am now in favor of...
The removal of the retail space makes a big difference.
Getting rid of the retail space, exactly. I'm in favor of this.
I'm just going to go to the audience. Is there anybody else in the audience who came to speak on this application? Any other comments from the other end of the table?
All right, I'll move to grant the relief as requested, providing that there's no work done. We're going to do this, no work done on...
Memorial Day to...
Memorial Day to Labor Day?
Yeah.
Do we need to include the condition, or is it in the condition that the commercial spaces for the management area of the properties?
Yeah.
Yes, I think we should, rather than just the office space.
And that the office space is to be used solely for a management office?
Yeah, literally from the board, right.
For the adjacent property owned by, that owned by Tac 3 LLC also?
Yes. And one of the conditions we had offered, which I think should be in there, would be that in the event that this came at a separate ownership from the adjacent property, that there would be an easement reserved for the...
Right.
Right, shown on the line.
Right. Anybody want to second the motion? Michael? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can't wait to see this, it's going to jam down here.
We've got a, you know, it's supposed to be at least four.
It's at least four. Kiram is...
Super majority.
Yeah, you've got it.
Well, is it, I just need to be in the...
Kiram, you were against it, right?
You can say against that, yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate those changes.
Yeah, it made a big difference. Who chaired the next one, because I'm not on it?
Well, I think Lisa and Mike together.
Nope, you're not on it either.
Eight Gul Island.
I thought it was Susan, Michael, Mark, Michael Angelostro, or Jeff.
And this wasn't heard last week?
It was, no, because nobody was there.
Nobody showed.
You were, okay, I...
This was the one that...
Yeah, I...
It took my place.
Your place, and you visited, so either of you can sit.
All right, so you were there originally, right?
Yep.
So why don't you do your thing?
So, and...
Do you want to see?
So Ed chaired last time.
So, Michael, you want to share?
So this is a continuance of application 5814, Eight Gul Island, Mark and Suzanne Forsythe, speaking for the applicants.
Frank Daly.
Isaiah Stover.
Thank you. So we, I think we set this up for a viewing. I did view it.
Have you had?
I did.
Hundred percent? Pretty good.
Yeah.
Anyone have any, anything they'd like to share, any numbers?
So anecdotally, the piece that you held up for us that last time, yeah, so when I was there, there seems like there is at that end, a little bit of an overhang. It might be ugly, but it looks like you could, and again, I'm not in the trade, so I don't know, but it looked like there was some that you could shave off or cut in to minimize that.
Well, you actually get back into the framing to go back far enough, because it's an inch and three quarters. So there's a three quarter inch overhang, and then you're, then you're an inch and a frame.
And you still have another inch.
I looked at it. Granted, it's not a big intrusion, but it's there. It's new construction. I'm going to have a hard time voting for it, I really am.
If I recall correctly, I was the only one who was in favor of it last time, and my attitude hasn't changed.
I feel the same way, Jeff does. New construction is a killer to me.
So it doesn't look like you're going to get approval here today. Is there anything that they could do in lieu of ripping that apart to...
It's not ripping it apart.
Well, they'd have to take some of the horizontal framing off it.
It's a double, it's a double 2x10?
It's let into the post, so we'd be changing the post as well.
The post encroaches also?
No, the post do not. But the framing that is let into those posts...
It's a piece of decking and part of a 2x10.
That's correct.
Pressure treated.
It doesn't, taking away a 2x10 or a length of it to make it conform is not going to do anything to structurally improve that depth of work.
No, it's let into the post, so it's already taken, you know, an inch and a half out of the post, so anything that we need to move back would go into these posts as well, which would render the posts structurally insufficient. So we would, in fact, have to change all the posts back. As well as the joists, the tie. Right, and the footings, which support them.
I didn't see that. I saw a 2x10 that sort of wrapped the post, and then another 2x10 that went in between, you know, in between the post.
They're let in, they're inside the posts.
Both of them are. And outside 2x10 is inside the post.
Yeah, there's packing, that's an airspace between structural members and the skirt.
So I don't think you're going to get the vote that you're looking for, so there's two possibilities. You can vote, or you can withdraw the application. The only difference is that I can think of that, well, there's two differences, I think, but correct me if you can think of another one. Number one, you wouldn't be able to come back here for a couple of years with anything similar to this application if we vote. And number two would be that the NHA wouldn't have this on record 50 years from now, that this application is turned down, and it wouldn't be in the town's records. Anything else?
Is the NHA, Historical Association?
Yeah, I mean, in other words, this wouldn't go on record, it's being turned down.
And they, so if they do that, I mean, they still have to fix it?
Yeah, yeah, you'd have to fix it, obviously.
Yeah, I think we'll withdraw it.
Withdraw without prejudice?
And then we'll fix it, yeah, absolutely, we'll just change it.
Is there a motion to...
Yes, you do need to vote.
Yeah, oh, you know, no, I know.
Or without prejudice.
I move the application to be withdrawn without prejudice.
I'll second that motion. Okay, any discussion? Anyone in the audience like to speak to this application? All those in favor of withdrawing without prejudice, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is 6114 Donalan Auto Service Inc. Edward Tool, Lisa Vincelli, Susan McCarthy, Michael Angelostro, Mark Por. Just identify yourself for the tape, please.
Eric Evans.
And tell us what you've done.
Which is the new site plan? Are we supposed to be looking at the 103 spaces?
Yes.
Taking out a lane for the inspection?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Yep, I got it. So just explain.
So last, last time I was here, we talked about cleaning up the plan and making areas for display. And we had to, there were three parking spots that were affected, which were in the front. So when we were here, we talked about putting parallel parking spots here on the, on that one inspection lane. So we took the three parking spots in the front and moved them to that inspection lane for parallel parking.
Okay.
And we were, we were going to do two, but it legally fits three, so we still have one more parking spot that's allowed.
Yeah, that's required.
That's required, that's required.
Any comments from the board?
That's what he asked me to do.
That's what he asked me to do.
So basically, we're just substituting this Exhibit A for the old Exhibit A.
Mm-hmm.
And, well, works for me. Is there anybody in the audience wants to speak about this one? No? Okay. Well, so can I get a motion?
Hold on, is that motion to approve the new site plan as submitted?
Second.
Yeah, works for me.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? No, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Moving on to new business, because this was never opened. 40-14 Nantucket Island Resorts LLC, 20 Cherry Street. So Michael Angelostro and Kiram.
Says I have a conflict, but I don't, I don't know why it's printed as such.
Okay.
Should I not sit on this one? Because this one might go a couple of left.
That's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need one more.
We need Rick to put that too, if any of you...
He's here.
Rick was here.
He was here.
Do you need...
Don't you have five?
Oh, yeah, we have five. No, Susan's not sitting.
Susan's not.
I'm here, concerned.
All right. So Rick has decided to show. We will not hold that against him. Some of us won't.
I'm already, I'm...
True, this is true. There's still time, Rick, it's tomorrow. Excuse me?
Jeff is...
Jeff is sitting, I believe.
Jeff is.
Yes? Yes? Are you sitting? Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Rick.
All right, thanks.
This never got open, did it?
No.
No.
No. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rick voted for the, I guess, applicant and appellant as well. The property is 20 Cherry Street, it's in the R1 zoning district. It's a little over an acre of land. Currently, there's a garage storage structure and greenhouse on the property. We're here, as I, it's something I think we're here last time, like as for the continuance, because one of the neighbors, Pepper Williams', tenant, Mr. Williams, complained of a leak to Marcus. Marcus issued an enforcement order on this property. We appealed that enforcement order and then eventually, at the request of staff, applied the alternative or a special permit, and we think that's necessary. The current use on the property, it's rented by the owner to Nantucket tents. They currently, for Mr. Grant, install 20 to 25 tents on the property. It's used six days a week from May through October, roughly. It's generally used for winter. They don't encourage any of the patrons to come to the site. It's not a retail establishment. Mr. Grant did say to me that it has happened, that a patron has come to the site, they have to, or something like that. But the site isn't set up to have meetings, and I don't encourage patrons to do so. There's also a small office on site as well. The last uses on site, we have every indication that this property is a commercial since, I'm not really sure when, for a long, long time. I think even Mr. Williams submitted a letter that indicated it's been commercial since 1930s.
Since the '30s?
I think so. You can ask him to maybe clarify it later, but...
Says on your stationery that it's been operated the same manner for over 30 years?
Yes, yeah.
Tents for 30 years?
Nope.
No.
Storage.
Storage, yeah.
Okay, I'll get to that. Sorry. I didn't mean to indicate that we've been, there've been tents slinging in and out of this place since the 1930s, but that the property itself has been in some form of commercial use for a long time, since prior to the Nantucket zoning backlog. In any event, at some point in the 70s, 1979, a special permit was applied for Sherwin Associates prior to it. And at that time, the special permit says it was a mix of residential and commercial storage structure in the property. 79, the special permit is granted. The special permit that's granted says a greenhouse is... The permit application, and, and the, and again, these are in your packet, of course, but I thought it might be helpful to pull them out to such a good point. These are site plans and drawings with special permit application. The site, the site plan shows a proposed four bay garage in front of that greenhouse, an office, a cabin, and old structures that I think were going to be demolished and opened for. I mean, if you look at the building design, it's a Sherwin Associates trip property, you see, this is, this is viewed from the back of the property. And if you look at this today, and you look at this, this is what we're looking at, and you see the greenhouse is behind a very large structure. Now, that's generally speaking, what's there today is, I don't even think it's a floor break room, I think it's a food break room, if you'll buy it another day. But the greenhouse behind it, just like, is applied for under the special permit. The greenhouse is, that's there now, and I think it was applied for, is much smaller than what you see in that picture. So this particular structure is, in my estimation, 60, 70% storage structure and about 30% greenhouse. Subsequent to that special permit being granted, the owner applied for a building permit. Building permit application is for a greenhouse and a storage structure. That's... That's, that's a preference. Subsequently, we granted a certificate for occupancy for the structure that says greenhouse and storage facility. So, what this, what this was, again, bought by Sherburne Associates, what this was supposed to be is a greenhouse to grow other plants and storage with everything related to it, specifically, it's more like a landscape shop. They service all their properties in the house, pick up things, store tools, rakes, shovels, lawn, who knows what. The storage structure, pick it up in the morning, do what they have doing it on their properties, and I assume come back at night, sort of trucks, whatever else they have to sort of. So, so the permitted use that's allowed here is really a greenhouse and a storage facility. We have every indication that this has been used for storage since that time, in one form or another. The greenhouse use has diminished over time, to slightly, but probably not to the extent that it was gaining. And at some point, and I think Mr. Williams' letter mentions this, and I was able to confirm it, that at some point, some part of this structure was used for some maintenance facilities. So, I don't know if that, what I don't know is whether that was in the summer, when things generally weren't being stored there, hotels, whatever. But I can confirm that at some point, that use that only was permitted took place in it. But at some, but at every point, I think, storage was used on site, that's what this building is for. You drive by it, it's a good building, yeah, it's got two garage spaces. And our position is that it's been storage all along. Storage now, currently used, tent storage. They, the only condition in that special permit was that it wasn't to be open to the public, that it was really for a private use. That it's not going to be a retail establishment, it's not retail. Again, they don't want to encourage their patrons to go there, it's not where they want to meet and grow plants. So, and our position is that it's, it's being used today as a, as allowed to be used as storage. That we've never abandoned that use, and that frankly, we can't abandon it. I think there's some information in your packet that you've potentially abandoned. You can't abandon a special permit use, it's permitted use, of course, it's permitted. You can abandon a use that's pre-existing, not before, that's prior to the bylaw, that you've been using for a while, and then you give it up for some time. But once you're permitted to use a use, you're permitted to use that use, so you have that permit. So, there's also a bare minimum, I know this is sort of a long presentation, but.
Unless the special permit is only issued for the applicant.
I, yeah, I think if, if the special permit has a condition that only that applicant, then I think what, I would say, that that applicant, right, could stop using that use, and come back and use that use ten years later. I think if, right, which is what I'm saying. However, I think if they wanted to sell to someone else, and it was specific to that applicant, then the next person coming in had to apply for special permit to amend it to say, and you be the applicant as well. And I know in your packet, and I know it's been similar, there's been a lot of discussion about the, the powers test, and I know you guys have been through it before. I'm not convinced myself that the powers test is appropriate, given that it's typically, that's what I get out in reading all case law. It's typically used, again, for something that exists prior to the bylaw, I think, or at the tip, is what we guys are reading. And then it has never had a special permit. And then all of a sudden morphs into something else, and then you go through the powers test. Nonetheless, I think I'll go through the analysis, of course. And I think, you know, obviously, it's important to think about what, you know, where do you start with the analysis? I think it starts with a special permit use that's granted. And has, I think, is the question that we would have to decide if you're going to use the powers test, is, has that use morphed into something that's, that's changed enough to use the powers test criteria? The criteria are three. Whether the, the new use reflects the nature and purpose of the use prevailing in the zone biologic effect, and if that would be known, the special permit position. Two, whether there's a difference in quality and character of the degree of use. And three, whether the current use is different in value and its effect on the neighborhood. If you find any one of those to be the case, then it's not protected, is what the, the powers test says. So, whether, whether the use reflects the nature and purpose of the use prevailing in the, the use was granted, I would say. I think it does, if it was a storage use, then you would suggest that storage is storage. It's, we're talking about a different material. Whether the quality, whether it's in quality and character, or the degree of use, I would suggest to you that it's, you know, it's, it's storage of tents versus shovels, rakes, lawn, plants, et cetera, is more cool for storage. And I don't, and essentially, what you do is you pick those items up and make them available, and you drop them off at night. You pick them up on one day, and you drop them off on another day. So, it's a quality and character that hasn't changed at all. And the third one, of course, is whether the use is different in kind and its effect to the neighborhood. And again, a landscape, a landscape storage structure in-house, like the storage structure relative to, versus a tent structure. Remember, and, you know, because this has been mentioned in some of the letters, that this is, this is in a residential zone, it's in R1. I don't know that I would necessarily call this a residential neighborhood. I'm not talking about, I just want to make sure that I'm characterizing this as a, you know, a little half, a little, a little neighborhood in a full setting, a residential zone. This street's a cut through to Maroon. There was a video store there, there's combies, there's camera appliances there, coffee shop. I have your powers across the street, our property backs up to the commons. So, and also, I think Mr. Williams mentioned in his letter, the neighborhood has grown over the years. And so, you know, I think to a certain extent, he's, he's right, obviously, there have been, you know, more residences, more homes, that I think have come to this location, and we, not the other way around, we can do that. And so, my point in saying all that is that, you know, that's, for one, I think it's possible, given that the, I think the use here is, is more akin to a landscaper shop, which, again, wasn't defined back in seventy, I don't know, this is correct. But that's, you know, it's possible that that's maybe a less intense, that this is maybe a less intense use than that. And to the extent, you know, there is a change in the neighborhood, some of that is beyond our control, at least it's been developed. So, that, you know, that's, that's our suggestion, that things haven't changed enough, and that we are protected under the special permit. I think in the alternative, of course, we requested a special permit, and you know, that we don't find that we're perfected. And I think in that case, if that's what you're inclined to decide, then you should grant this on the basis that, that this particular use isn't substantially detrimental to the use that's allowed, then by special permit, or limited in specific eligibility. And, you know, perhaps there's, you know, perhaps I will assume we, we want to condition it appropriately if valid, so, obviously, I'm available for any questions if you have.
Okay, thank you. Board members, initial questions?
Is Marcus coming?
Marcus is not coming. He's, I don't think he's, well. He had a heart attack.
Thank you.
Oh, my God. Poor guy.
Um, I, I just have a question, and you probably covered this, and I was looking through my packet, but the special permit clearly says, intended use is for the operation of a greenhouse to supply the needs of Sherburne Associates for its commercial enterprise. So, it's always connected to these, for the use of it as a private greenhouse connected to Sherburne Associates. So, how do we, how does changing it to, I know that the building permit and the CFO say storage and greenhouse, but certainly the way that the special permit was written was, it was specific to be, the greenhouse would be used for the private purposes of the owners. You know, it, it seemed very specific that the board made that part of their special permit.
Yeah. And I think there's a reason for that. You know, if you look at the special permit application, you know, the real question was, is this a, a private use, or is it a public use? So, in other words, it'd be open to the public, and that, that's why that conditions it. I think those seventy-eight permits aren't as refined as what you guys issued today. They just don't have a lot of information. I think the issue was, and I think probably the issue for the neighborhood at the time, was, you know, you're going to be operating a greenhouse, you're going to be creating plants, you're going to have all this stuff you're storing there, you're going to be selling things. This is going to be open to anyone coming in here, and I think that that is a reflection of protecting against that, and that's why they made it, so that no one was allowed to come there, that it was just for their use off-site. Kind of like the, you know, the contractor shop conditions you put on now, that it's fabrication on site. People are coming for hours to cabinets, that they fabricated and then moved off-site, and I think that's what that's came to.
I think you can take it one step further, though, and it's the private use of the owner of the greenhouse, the plants, that's their private use, it's not for public sale, but it also doesn't mean you can divvy up the property and, and rent it to various tenants. I mean, that would be my reading of it.
Right, well, that's my question, I mean, yeah. It doesn't say anywhere else, it says it specifically for that use for that person, it doesn't say.
Seventy, original special permit?
Yeah, it's on page eighty-eight.
The trips?
Yeah.
Nineteen eighty?
Yeah.
Because it looks to me like, unless I missed something, that the trips got the approval, and then sold the property to Sherburne Associates immediately. Sherburne Associates were the ones that built it.
Well, they were, they were for Sherburne Associates and the special permit.
Yeah.
So, that must have been happening at the time of this.
Yeah.
So, but the trips were the applicants.
But the Sherburne Associates is noted in the, in the decision as the.
So, I sort of feel like I don't, I can't see how we can consider it as a continued use of this special permit.
Well, definitely, the tents are not continued use of the special permit unless they were growing them from seeds, maybe. And then sending them out into the world, I don't know. But assuming that didn't happen, and also, I mean, the, the special permit itself doesn't say anything about storage, unfortunately.
No, just the building department stuff does, so, that's where the confusion gets.
And that, you know, that's why, and that's, again, that's why I say to you, that this, these special, I mean, this one's.
Yeah, it's pretty brief.
Seventy-eight. I mean, it doesn't say what it, you know, today you talk about parking, you talk about exact, every special is abused. And the fact, that's why I gave you those plans, because the special permit doesn't tell a whole story. There's no way those plans were submitted, and then they, and then they just approved the greenhouse, right? And then they walk in with the special permit with those plans, and they, and the permit is issued for this big storage structure in the greenhouse. So, you know, my point in giving you all that is that, no doubt in my mind, that was contemplated all along. The special permit also says that, that it was, that there was storage on the site before the greenhouse was created. So, I think what they, what they did is took the, took the storage structures down around site and built this new one and put the greenhouse in back.
Yeah, I think I can get my mind around the storage notion. I mean, if you have a greenhouse, you're going to be storing stuff in there.
But whether it's storage for them specifically, or for other tenants is the question.
That's how I read it, that it was for them, the storage is for their business.
It wasn't to other people.
It wasn't, yeah. So, that, that's my sticking point, I don't know.
Is the, the other components still active, the greenhouse?
Well, it depends on whether you, you think it's for anyone else or not. I mean, I think it has been rented in the past to, again, not for use, but just not for use for a patient's permit. I think maybe Flowers and Chestnut may have used it in the last couple of years to grow some stuff, so.
So, it's got two uses then, or it did?
Two tenants, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, again.
Are you applying for two?
I'm, you know, we're hit with Marcus, and he's here, I mean, to the extent we're applying for something, I mean, I guess we, we want to keep the greenhouse use to the extent we still use it. We want to make sure we have a storage use, and, and we'd like, I guess, to take it a step further, to the extent if you're, only an IR can use that storage use, we'd like the ability for someone else to use it, depending upon the use and whether that's approved or not. Or it's, I mean, what storage?
So, at this point, are, today, are we only here talking about the use of it as part of Nantucket Tents, and not anything else in the back, in the greenhouse?
Yeah, I think, I mean, in other words, I, I think we can have, I think at a bare minimum, we can have a greenhouse and, and storage related to that use. And if, and if you don't find that we can rent that storage to someone else, then that's what we can have. What we, what we'd like to have is, without any, we don't think we have that. What we'd like to have is the ability, I guess, to rent it to someone else if you don't find that we've already kind of.
Well, I think if we were going to act on that type of request, we would need a lot more information as to, like, a detailed site plan, what was, what you really were contemplating in terms of renting space, so. You know, everything.
Operation.
We'd need a lot more information. I'm not prepared to, unless everybody else is to wing that.
No, no, don't, yeah, don't misunderstand me, I don't mean you want the ability to just rent it willingly. I, I think initially, we would like to be able to continue the magic for this tenant, this tenant needs space, I think they like this tenant, and, and I wouldn't, by the way, I wouldn't expect, by deciding today, or even coming in January, to say, go ahead and rent it. I would expect it, I think, for the time being, to be specific to that, to the owner or that use, that tenant. And, you know, and another tenant wanting to go in there, I think they have to come in with a modification. And I, I mean, I guess I can, you know, site, parking site plan and such, I can certainly.
Well, I was going to ask, like, how much square footage are they renting? How much are you, how much parking are you supposed to be providing? How much can you provide?
Right, right.
Yeah, we would need a lot more information to go there, even for one tenant, and I'm not saying we're going there. I just think we would need a whole different application. I, I think what we'll do right now is go to the audience, if anybody wants to talk about this. But just come down to the mic and identify yourself, please, I know who you are, but.
Cliff Williams, eighteen Williams Street. I didn't, I didn't make the complaint, but I, now that the can of worms has been opened, I responded to the lawyer's rebuttal for, I guess, special permit or wherever they headed. I think the application states that they show in lieu of it was used, like, probably a lot of properties were back in the eighties, for commercial use, even though it was residential, and, like, a lot of things now, it's come to an end unless you can provide a special permit. It wasn't given as a special permit and storage, because there was storage. It was more of, I think they state, it wouldn't be any more detrimental to the neighborhood. So, I would think those uses were taken away in lieu of the greenhouse. I, like I said, I, I hopefully have been able to read this. It has been used for a greenhouse that I know for a long time. It certainly can't be used for anybody else to rent to or store things there. The storage permit, or the, I guess the reference to the permit, the building permit for storage, I don't know how they got that, but I think you've made the point that it was never on the special permit for any kind of storage, other than probably greenhouse storage, whether it be plants, whatever it is, not tents. I looked up some case law, Bruno versus the Board of Appeals for Rentham, where if you did get a building permit, and you got, in the case they did, where it said storage, if they didn't apply for the special permit for ten years, then by their own actions, they're now unable to do so. That's there for you to see. I think the time has come and gone for that property. I don't think, I don't think it meets the, the greenhouse aspect. Counsel's made a point, I'm not sure if it's true, that once you get a special permit, it never goes away? I'm not aware of that. I thought once you didn't use the special permit for three years, you didn't have current use, that it went away. So, I, but I was, I was hoping to get Andrew Vors and the planning board, and maybe some other people, I'm not a lawyer, even, I seem to play one a lot, to chime in and give their opinion on, like you said, the test, as far as, doesn't meet the. As far as, doesn't meet the criteria, there's three different items, so. I think it's, I guess it's more of a discussion to be had on what the property's done, where it's been, and where it needs to go. We're in a residential neighborhood, even though we abut some commercial property. Definitely semis that are stored there, boats that are stored there, all that stuff just doesn't meet the criteria, and I think it's time we move forward and do something positive with it and try to meet the bylaws as they're written. Thank you.
Thank you. It's an interesting question about the three-year issue.
Yeah, what happened to the Fagie Building that was commercial and then they lost it?
Right. I'm curious about that, just as a matter of curiosity.
It's in the bylaws.
Which is in the bylaws?
It's, as I stated, it's one of the line, which we see.
Right.
States non-conforming uses and structures abandoned or not used for a period of three years shall not be reestablished.
Okay.
Okay, so, that doesn't...
It's what?
You're saying you didn't abandon the storage part of it?
Well, I agree. I did, we didn't abandon the storage part of it, under one.
But it wasn't, the special permit doesn't speak to storage?
Doesn't speak to storage, but I'm certain, I just, I mean, and believe you, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying that 'cause I'm getting paid to do so, but there's no doubt in my mind that application was for the storage as well.
Well, but that's interesting, 'cause it says in the application, zoning officers above present uses multi-residential and private stable and miscellaneous storage facilities intended uses to discontinue the stable and storage facility uses. That's in the application in nineteen eighty.
And that's for the facilities.
Storage facilities uses.
And that's my point, that they wanna rip those down and create another one. I mean...
Discontinue means discontinue, not take down and reestablish.
You know, and then why do they put in, why is there an application with a site plan that says four bay garage office?
I don't know when that was, that was attached to this application.
It's in, it's in the packet.
I don't, it's in the packet.
Well, it says proposed, it shows the storage facilities that were there on it, and it shows the proposed new facility, the greenhouse behind it. So, I mean...
Okay, so you're saying that...
If that stuff didn't exist at, I think I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent, right? If those drawings didn't exist that said, trip Sherman property and have that site planned in it, then yeah.
Was this attached to the special permit?
No, no, I mean, seventy-eight. I mean, you know, nothing was attached to it.
So where did, they weren't attached, but...
So it was part of the building permit application. Where did you find, I mean, where did these come from?
As well as, as well as the special permit application.
It was attached to the special permit.
It was part of the application.
Yeah.
So this, this one on one oh one, page one oh one, the first one with the X's appears to be the discontinuation. They're X-ing them out, if you will, on one hundred, and then on one oh one, that these are, this is what they're proposing to build?
First floor, second?
Yes.
So that was attached to the nineteen eighty special permit application?
Yes.
Boiler room, first floor garage.
Office.
And then this is one-story wood-framed barn.
Well, I mean, you certainly could make the argument that the one-story wood-framed barn, you're gonna put something in there.
Right.
I don't think you would build a, I mean, I can see that my way of that.
But where's the stable?
To answer your question, you know, A, I don't think we abandoned it, B, I don't think we can, I don't think it can be abandoned for a special permit use. The provision in one thirty-nine, thirty-three, as the owner said, non-conforming uses and structures do not conform to abandoned or not used for a period of three years shall not be reestablished. Your own bylaw defines non-conform structures uses law. A structure or a use of law that does not conform to a zoning restriction of the chapter for the zoning district in which it is located, provided that the non-conformity was, non-conformity was lawfully in existence on July twenty-seventh, nineteen seventy-two, by law, or in the case of a structure use or law made non-conforming by an amendment to the chapter on the effective date of such amendment. In other words, that defines non-conform uses as those uses that were in existence prior to seventy-two, right? Or that were in existence allowed in the bylaw, then the bylaw changes prohibited. That's not us. We have a permitted use of this, by the special permit, and by the, the application of the building inspector, the permit that was issued, again, all with the special permit objection, and the certificate of occupancy. So that's why, and I might add, I've looked, Massachusetts case law, can't find any case that says, once you have a special permit use, it can be abandoned. I see a lot of cases that say you get a special permit, and if you don't use it within a certain period of time, then it's wrong, you gotta apply again. Or you have a pre-existing non-conforming use, like I just said, prior to seventy-two, real good, and you don't use it. For, you know, your restaurant that was in a residential zone in nineteen seventy, and then seventy-five, you don't use it for four years, and you try to open up a restaurant again? And that's...
But you're saying if you have a special permit in seventy-three for that restaurant, for whatever reason, and then you...
And then didn't use it, it's actually different, and someone came in and rented it.
You could start it up again.
And start over again. And that's, that's the decision. You know, I might also say, in the Bruno case, that Mr. Williams' Reddit, it doesn't say what he suggests it says. What it says is that when you have a use, essentially, there's a statute in Massachusetts that says if you have a use or a structure in place for ten years, Marcus can't knock him and go and say, bye-bye. It's unenforceable, because he relied on that. When you have a use like that, that doesn't automatically become a conforming use, meaning it's not, doesn't mean it's an allowed use. It means that it's a not-allowed use that the town can't afford. And in the context of that case, what it meant is, if you go apply to the zoning board or, and, and ask for a certain use, you can't presume that that use is automatically allowed and plus can have a certain use. It's a use that is not allowed, but they can't, the town can't afford it. So that's, that's all that case does.
Okay. Oh. Did you wanna say something?
Well, I understand what the counsel's saying here, but he stated earlier in the hearing that this has been a commercial use perhaps since nineteen thirty? Mixed use, probably. We don't know necessarily about that, but I believe what I read in the application, by the Sherburne Associates, that it had been a barn, a, you know, stable, a private residence, they wanted to establish a greenhouse. So we don't know necessarily whether or not it was a commercial, but...
But I also...
For longer than the bylaw.
Yeah, we don't. And I, to be perfectly honest, I don't care. I just want the permit from nineteen eighty. I mean, I think even Mr. Williams is, he said in his letter, there are a lot of commercials, it's mixed commercial use of use, so frankly, trust him better than me, matters prior to the segment.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wants to talk about this one? No. I didn't miss anybody. What's that thought here?
Just another quick question, Rick. So the NIR has owned this for the last, how many years?
Um, you know...
Nineteen and thirty-four years.
Well, it was Sherburne Associates, and then it was NIR. So I mean, I think, I wanna say NIR, but most of the properties in...
That was a stock sale, right?
You know, honestly, I don't know. I wasn't involved at the time. Apology, I don't know the answer.
That's, that's fine. So did they, when's the last time this property was actually used as a greenhouse? Like, for what greenhouses are actually used for, not storage, talking about the space as far as growing things?
I think within, I wanna say within the last couple of years, I think, one of the owners told me that Nantucket tents had subleased to Flowers.
Okay, so now we have a subleasing going on.
Yeah.
How long has Nantucket tents been in there?
They have been in there four years.
Just out of curiosity.
The NIR stopped using it as a greenhouse prior to that, started up as a greenhouse only because Nantucket tents subleased it to somebody else.
Flowers, yeah, so I don't know.
They haven't been, you know, I don't think NIR's been running a greenhouse on there for a long time.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at.
I mean, I can find that out, but I, but you're right.
So today, are we supposed to vote on upholding Marcus, or...
Well, the, the, I believe it was re-noted so that, and the applicant asked in the alternative, the answer is yes. And in the alternative, whether or not we'd be entertaining the notion of a special permit. So, which is what Marcus was, I mean, that's basically what Marcus said you had to do anyway, correct? That was what his cease and desist was all about. You had to go get a special permit, or...
I'd have to dig it out.
Yeah, my question.
I think they, sorry. It's just like...
I'll dig it out.
Eleanor is, does my...
It's in the, it's in the packet somewhere.
Yeah, I, I read it.
This is, apply for and receive the required special permit.
Right.
To the zoning board of appeals for the alteration of the pre-existing non-conforming commercial use of the property, which...
So, you good with that, so far?
There, there was a, was, was it, we have, I guess we don't care if it was pre-existing non-conforming, 'cause there was a special permit issued in nineteen eighty. So...
Yeah.
Although it may have been.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say it may have been. I mean, I think the special permit says, the special permit says that, I think it says that it's pre-existing by law and that it's...
The application?
It's, you know, the, the actual special permit. It's a multi-residential private stable or miscellaneous storage facilities. So I guess it does say that it's prior to seventy-two, but I don't know why we fly that special permit. Otherwise, it's a, it's probably there.
Yeah, it doesn't state it. Clearly, the nineteen eighty...
Was a barn...
Document wasn't super clear.
Barn was probably allowed.
It does say, it is apparent that the present use of the property is in non-conforming use in the present use, and that various business activities have been conducted on the property for many years.
Okay. So in answer to your question, Kieran, yeah, we're, I think if we were to uphold Marcus, I guess you've just saved yourself a step, 'cause all Marcus was saying is you need to come get a special permit to bust what you're doing. But having said that, I mean, I don't, if we were gonna look at this as an, as a special permit, I think I would prefer to see the real site plan and a real definition of what goes on there, who subleases from whom, you know, and/or, I don't really care who subleases from whom, but, you know, what, what do you wanna do there? So the neighbors can, number one, get a, a look at it, and number two, be comfortable moving forward if you were to get a special permit, that this is what is permitted in two thousand and fourteen, and this is what we can expect. Not all of a sudden, there's ten little subleases in there.
Yeah.
So that's my, you know, screening, hours...
Yeah, I mean, she had Eleanor put a list and cleaned up the site, picked up the greenhouse, spent some screening, of course deliveries on the interior of the lot as opposed to to at street level, and hours of operation.
So, does that sound like...
And parking.
Something that you might wanna entertain, or...
So we vote today to...
Uphold Marcus.
Yes. And the cease and desist was issued appropriately, and then we ask for them for more information on their application for a special permit.
If I may, remove, if you want.
Go ahead.
I think really more so, Andy Brennan, who has all this stuff in there and probably is planning on moving it for a couple of months. I think if you uphold Marcus at this very moment, in other words, if you can find that it has been altered without a special permit, then I think technically, Andy's gotta clean all his stuff out of there and find a place to put it in the next, or many days. I think if, if you're inclined to maybe at least entertain a special permit, right? I think what the application we agreed before, I should say, that the information you've been doing, hours, all that stuff, is gonna be related to that tent business anyway. So it might make sense to hold off on that decision, understanding that I think, I understand that's where you're going with it, and let us come in so that we can formally apply, or I should say, formally give you the information you're looking for on that particular business, screening, parking, et cetera. And then you can decide all at the same time, you know, A, we're holding Marcus and B, we're getting a special permit, or A, we're holding Marcus and B, we're not gonna get the special permit, at which point, you know, the rent is a little more on the wall than it was as well. It's a mystery.
That's fine.
Either way, Marcus is not gonna throw the applicant out during this, while this application is...
Right, so, yeah, I mean, I just, I just don't wanna technically have that upheld yet. I understand that's where you're going. So, and I agree. I don't think anyone's gonna really force it, nobody is yet.
However, Steve Butler's the current CEO, not Marcus.
Well, we could, we could make that in our, put that in our decision.
That needs a lot to operate.
Yeah, that is, it is an active application for the board, and I've never known a tenant to be thrown out, or somebody who's illegally, operating illegally while the, Allah, the bar is...
Well, I was gonna say, this isn't gonna go on ad nauseam. I mean, it has to be dealt with soon.
I mean, I guess, you know, that's it, you know, obviously, it's up to you guys. I mean, I believe everyone's gonna throw that out, I guess. I'm just worried about kind of the technical aspects of it.
Well, arguably, it could be thrown out if we uphold, I mean, I wouldn't...
You know, that's the point.
He could, Steve could throw a book out and it could be removed from the...
If you're worried about that, then I'm fine, not voting today. I, I've never seen that done. It's just not in the spirit of the community. I've never seen it done.
How do we vote to allow them to continue to operate? I'm not sure, clear on that.
Well, we don't vote to allow them to continue to operate, we, we simply don't vote, you know, we continue today, and under somewhat bizarre situation, you can continue to operate even if you're later deemed to be illegal. Well, I mean, the notion being, you haven't, it hasn't been deemed illegal yet, or, or so...
But, I mean, let's...
But we have, excuse me, we have in the past had some of these go on forever, which is unfair to the neighbors, so...
So maybe we just confuse on it.
Well, yeah, like next month.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was the point of continuing to today as opposed to February when I was asking for it. I mean, I, you know, is that they should have a reasonable expectation that this is gonna be taken care of sooner rather than later.
And he doesn't really operate this time of year anyway.
No, he doesn't. I mean, I can...
I'm not so worried about the tent business as, as moving forward. I think it needs to be, you know, we need to be very clear. Go ahead.
That was my point. I don't know if you understood it. Seeing we have a lot of questions on whether a permit runs out in three years if you don't continue it, there's a lot of things that I believe we don't understand, so I'd love that conversation. I'm not trying to throw anybody out or put anybody out of business, but maybe we could bring other people in that have better knowledge of when these things expire, or whether they don't expire, or whether or not you can give a special permit now for renting, or whether you can't, or whether this thing's just done. That's, I guess that's what I'm looking for.
Well, in terms of the three-year or abandonment or whatnot, it sounds to me like there's been some storage or some activity... storage or some activity at that site. I mean, I've been here for a while. I don't remember ever going by, and nothing going on there. I, are we talking three years in terms of greenhouse activity? Or are you?
Any activity, there's, there's never been a special permit for storage. The only permit that's ever been given is for a greenhouse. Walter Barniky bought this property contingent on the fact that they got that special permit because he was saving money by producing his own flowers, his own plants. My sister-in-law lived there, and then, as I stated in the, in my rebuttal, that it's, you know, it stopped long ago, then it was a carpenter shop, so I guess there's things that we have to figure out.
Well, there are several COs that talk about the storage, unfortunate, not unfortunately, but.
Well, the building permit does, even though the special permit, like I said, wasn't issued, so under that rent them, like I said, there's a lot of case law, they didn't, they've never applied. So there was never application for it, so therefore, again, it's, time's run out.
Okay, well, we can look, I mean, you can come up with some explanation on that. I, I think what you're hearing is we would like to continue.
I think, you know, it's my feeling that this has been out there for a long time, and I would think that these guys could come up with a plan by next month's meeting, and I think that, I don't like the idea of continuing it again and again.
Right.
No, I, I think.
I really don't.
Yeah, I think we're in agreement.
I mean, this operation, they can clearly afford it, they can clean up the place, they can begin to make some good faith efforts to, um...
Got it.
And get it cleaned up for, certainly by the summer.
You mean to get the whole situation cleaned up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and hopefully the.
If we were to go that direction. I mean, the alternative is, there is no special permit granted, and, you know, back to square one, I guess. So, in the interest of moving on, we, can I get a motion? Because I, I understand we don't want to go forever on this.
So we're just making a motion to continue?
I think so.
Make that motion.
Continue to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is January 22nd, I believe. Because you're going to be here then. Okay?
Make that motion.
Okay, Michael makes a motion to grant, I mean, to continue to the 22nd, makes a second, say any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All righty. Okay.
Michael, do you want to say?
I hear the rest of them too, before we start this, so.
Let's take a minute.
Fair enough.
Did you guys get your packages sent out to mail?
Yes, we did, thank you.
Were they soaked?
No, they weren't. They were dirty. Someone was very good about putting a bag on.
When I saw that one, but I'm looking for. Like, every day, I'm like, little gopher.
Right.
Hmm. Okay, okay.
All right, we ready?
Yes, it's not me to sit or no?
On, uh, this is from, um...
Well, I mean, I don't want to, just don't want to make things difficult.
What are you doing?
I think, I'll just step out. I'll just let you guys.
Go take a nap.
Huh?
Okay, so, we're back, we're, we're good?
Yeah.
So this is?
14.
You good? Who's sitting?
I can, I can not.
No.
You're on, you're fine. No, so Jeff's off, so this, these five, 67 dash 14, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to ruin it, so I'm just going to add all as owners, and then Tucker Properties LLC and Trade Wind Cottages Condoming as applicants for the, uh...
That's continued.
Oh, that's continued, because it says continue to January 22nd right there. Just checking to see if everybody was awake. 63 dash 14, Elizabeth Hughes, 14 Spearhead Road, for the applicant. I am not feeling, but not bad. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Joseph Kidd, representing the applicant. I represent Elizabeth Hughes. She owns and operates a retail business on Main Street. The proposal is asking for a special permit relief for a lot that she acquired within the, using better reference to call it a subdivision off of Arrowhead. Those lots were primarily created for commercial industrial uses. I know there have been other applicants, including myself, for another lot owner in, in that development area. She is asking for special permit relief and has submitted for interior storage and warehousing of product materials, goods, furniture, and the like for her business. She would not be operating a retail business at that location, would restrict the interior storage. The application initially was submitted with a site plan that had a driveway access off of Spearhead, and then an alternative site plan was submitted with a driveway access off of Prince Road. The lot intersect, the lot is located at the intersection. Leave it up to the board to decide which of the two app, uh, plans. My client actually likes the second plan that had been submitted with the driveway access off of Prince Road. Both, uh, both site plans show sufficient open space, 20% open space, a loading area, two nine-by-twenty parking spaces, and again, and the driveway access, as well as the proposed building, commercial building to be constructed on, on the lot. And so, we asked the, the board if they would consider the, the second site plan, which is the access off of, you know, in their considerations for a special permit relief. Again, this lot, just to refresh board's memory, I don't know if I have to or not, but this is one of those lots that has the RC2 zoning freeze, and unfortunately, under the RC2 zoning freeze, interior storage, you needed special permit relief, whereas it is now so for the commercial industrial, and it's, does not require a special permit.
I thought you had the option of using heater, heater zoning.
Correct. We chose the RC2 zoning freeze, and are going.
I'm curious why you chose that rather than the CI, when you, would have to be here.
CI, I believe, and also with the limitations on activity as well. I think we're entitled to the freeze of the RC2 as far as the usage.
Wait a minute, I think.
You can have the residential, and it's not ancillary to the commercial.
Those are the right lots, it's five thousand.
Yeah, the size of the lot, just to provide us.
Oh, oh, see, the CI is a big amount.
CI is not a big.
Okay, sorry.
Is there a residential unit? There is no residential unit attached to this, you know? Some, well, that's where I understood some of the other applicants came in. They were trying to maintain that.
Primarily because of lot size.
Yeah, I agree. I, go ahead.
It conforms to everything, everything out there that we've approved is very similar to this. I don't, I would, I'm in favor of granting.
How do we feel about the chain link everywhere?
That's the only question I have.
I don't, I don't care.
The application proposes a chain link fence on the two boundaries, and the abutting property where the approval had already been granted by this board already was going to be putting the chain link fence in between, so we're just chain linking fence the other side.
I, I, I'm sure you're right. I, I don't remember that. I remember we gave people a year after completion to put the screening up.
That's what I remember, and generally vegetative screening.
Yeah.
Chain link fence even approved at the body HTC?
I, I don't know that, but I will tell you that the abutting property in 12 Spearhead Road is owned by Hugh Septic, and that is part of the relief that I obtained by this board was a chain link fence.
Along the back, property line.
With the combination of screening?
I don't believe that was the case, and I have that in my file, but I don't believe that was the case.
We'd like to see, yeah.
And it's the. It's the continuation of this.
Right.
Northerly property line.
I know, you know, this has come up, somebody asked me recently about why he has to put up vegetation, and other people get to him with that.
Yeah, question. It's a good question.
Right, so it would be disappointing if we weren't consistent, but.
So the chain link fence really just would keep stuff from blowing off of their site onto somebody else's?
Wouldn't the fencing have to do with the HTC anyway?
I, I would think it's got to be HTC.
Separate from what we say?
Yeah.
So did he get HTC approval?
With that as well. I do have the prior.
From what does it say?
Application 2214, and install chain link fence of 06 feet by same height on the perimeter boundary lines along three sides of the locust, as shown on the site document.
So that already exists on this one side, though?
It was on that.
On the one side.
We signed that.
I think everybody that's sitting at that did. Yes.
Disappointing.
Did they get HTC approval to put in the chain link fence?
Sure. That common boundary is, is one side of.
So that's already done?
Previously approved for the chain link fence.
So that's already done, though?
The chain link, I'm not aware that the chain link fence has been installed directly, but that was prior approval for that application. And again, this, because, I mean, we have interior store, so it's not like anything is going to be exterior.
I don't see how you get away with the chain link from the HTC stem.
Right.
There are lots out there that have chain link.
Do you know if your client went?
Chain link fence subject to HTC approval, or whatever you want to do, to voice your decision.
Yeah, I was just curious if your other client went to the HTC to get approval for the chain link fence?
I'm not aware, but I can turn around and.
I just want, want the board to know that it, it's not the exact same board.
I'm sure you do. Well, let us guess, if you're on it.
I noticed the absence of mine.
Yeah, oh, that was a surprise. Having said that, I mean, we can't bless chain link anyway, vis a vis the HTC.
Right, we're, we're blessing some sort of a screening or fencing, and it's up to the aesthetics. The board that actually, you know, rules on that to decide whether or not chain link is appropriate.
So we could amend our, or not amend, but change up the way we do these particular applications in, say, chain link or vegetative screening or a wooden fence. So you don't have to come back here, because if you don't get approval for the chain link fence. Now, the other interesting thing about it, of course, is if we give them a year to do this, the question is whether or not they get the CO before they put the fence up anyway, like saying, "I really need my CO," and then they, you put up whatever the hell you want.
Well, how can they get the CO if they haven't completed the requirements of the?
I don't know.
Special permit.
There are several chain link fences already.
Well, I know that, I know that.
And I, I would say this, if, if there is a, a, a location on the island where chain link fences should be okay, it's this location. However, I don't think we're authorized to make that decision, but.
So why don't we, why don't we word it that we approve the application with the stipulation that chain link fence, board fence, or vegetative screening be put on the, what is it, the north and east side?
West.
Whatever it is.
North and west, yeah.
Eleanor, you wanted to say something?
Just that in my job, I've encountered many people who own or are considering first, or are out there who've already been granted a special permit relief who prefer the chain link fence for both cost reasons and efficiency in terms of installation. So I have had a number of people come see me about that.
I'm sure everybody would prefer.
And frankly, if I was building this building, that's what I'd want to do too. And I know that's not really the question here, but I, I don't think we can.
Just so you know, other people will probably be coming and asking about that.
I think it's an HTC.
And again, it has been, there exists.
Well, we don't know if they were approved, or if somebody just put up a fence.
Yeah. So again, I just, I, I agree with Michael that that's not our purview, and we should just stipulate some sort of screening, vegetative, or fencing as approved by the HTC.
I like it.
I think it would be unfair to your client, us not to give her some options.
Right.
Okay, so is that a motion?
Idea, so why don't you put that in?
So grant the relief, you made a motion, didn't you?
I, I.
Well, did anybody, is anybody here to speak? Did you ask?
Did I ask? Anybody else in the audience want to talk about this?
All right, I move that we grant the relief as requested, except that the, is it, what's it, the northerly and westerly boundary?
Right.
Be defined by chain link fence, board fence, vegetation, or some other.
Screening.
Screening approved by the HTC.
Option two?
Option two.
Option two is fine.
That's what you're.
So this has screened it along the corner? We leave this open, is that it? The road is not screened?
I guess so.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made in second, any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you guys called each other, didn't you?
I didn't even notice.
I was worried that somebody might say what is not.
All right, moving on. Jivko and Anna Kalpaasenov, 27 Appleton Road, 64 dash 14, for the applicants. Just identify yourself. You might go to the microphone. I guess you don't have to. Is anybody here to listen to this one? No, so go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Steve Varofsky, here with the applicant, Jivko Kalpaasenov. Jivko and his family live at 27 Appleton. They have an HTC approval to construct a one-and-a-half story. It's a garage on the ground floor with bedrooms, and his daughter on the second floor. We're requesting a special permit to reduce the side yard setback in this R10 zone from 10 feet to 5 feet. We're doing this with the understanding that in 2007, it was RC2, when Jivko and his wife bought the company, it was RC2 with a five-foot setback, and we're requesting this special permit under Section 13916C1, which states that the board of appeals have the right to. And we're requesting this special permit under Section 13916C1, which states that the board of the schools have the right to reduce the setback back to its sort of previous state when it was the, the R C2.
When did it change?
Changed in 2012.
It was a zoning change to this area in 2012. The relief that we requested on attractive route 1 to construct this addition, the pattern on this property would be very consistent with everything that's developed on both sides of this street. The zoning across the street today is still RC2.
Correct.
And so I think you would find that this addition would be very consistent with the nature of development up and down Appleton Road on both sides of the street.
What's going to happen inside the garage?
I will store vehicles.
Okay. Work vehicles?
No.
No.
Antique-
Antique, okay.
Vintage motorcycles and it's, it's not antique car, but it's an old car.
Do you work on them?
No.
So there's no noise associated?
No, not whatsoever. It's just a dry area to keep them.
This is basically residential garage?
Yes.
And you're only asking for relief to the setback?
And it'd be residential above it?
It will be a bedroom above the garage.
Connected to the house.
Connected to-
Connected to the living quarters.
Accessible from the interior of the existing side door residence.
Oh, I see. So the living room's upstairs, the kitchen's downstairs.
Correct.
And just to be clear, is the storage of the antique cars for your personal use or is this a business?
For a personal.
Personal, okay. Next he's going to ask what kind they are, so if you find something missing.
I can go on and on about these details.
No, I just wanted to make sure that your neighbor's not going to come back here in, in six months and say, you know, how could you approve this? If there's no noise attached to it, it's not commercial, and it's, it's allowed in the bylaw by special permit, I have no problem.
Okay, was that a motion?
Well, you asked the audience already. I think they said nobody was here.
Does anybody want to talk about this now? No, okay.
So I, I would make a motion that we approve the application with, with a note that there's not going to be any commercial use of the garage.
I like it. And what, what, with our usual caveat, you've given yourself six inches. Don't come back.
It would be actually on the plan, six inches less than it would be after the building.
We actually expect it to be both to the six feet.
Right. Good.
And, and one of the little known facts is that if you give the building inspector a survey plan of the foundation after it goes in, and it turns out that you made a mistake, and that that survey's wrong, you can apply for a special permit relief rather than a variance.
But, well, we don't have to go, you're not going to make them a mistake, right?
Measure twice.
All right. So that was a motion?
That's the motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Could I, our bud, you're including the condition to go no closer than the allowed dang without further warning from the board, correct?
The five feet.
Only this addition?
Yeah. Only this addition, yeah. You don't-
Just that has to be in the-
Yeah. In other words, can't keep going.
You're writing this one up though.
Or if you wanted to elongate the garage, they'd have to come back.
Right. This is what you applied for.
We applied for this book, right?
Right.
Exactly.
Right. So if you wanted to be closer, you know, if the family gets bigger and it goes out, you'd have to come back along that same line. It's not a blanket. Okay? Okay, I think we, we voted yea. So you're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Before we go on, can I ask the other board members, if I leave, does it present a problem to anybody? I leave now. Catch your last vote. Mark?
We still have more.
Nobody else has conflicts?
I was not told of any other conflicts.
Okay. Thank you.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
All right, Michael, see ya. Okay, so we're on 6514, 21 Sheep Pond Road. George, no?
No, that's all right.
Oh, tell me that was continued. I missed it. George and Marie Frazza, for the applicant.
Um, are you sitting, Jeff?
Ready?
Yep.
Okay. Sarah Alge for the applicant. I think you heard this last month on an emergency basis.
Yep.
This is the actual relief that we're requesting. The Frazzas have actually, since I was here last month, picked up the house and put it on temporary cribbing. It had lost another six feet and was actually hanging over the edge of the bank. So at this point, we're asking for a variance to move the house as far back as we possibly can into the roadway. We have gotten a license from the county to use a portion of Sheep Pond Road that is not currently used for vehicular traffic. We're leaving open a 12-foot wide access that would go down to the water so that fishermen and other people who use the beach can continue to have access. That's the route that used to go down to the Ratner property that long ago fell into the ocean. The license will remain in effect while hopefully a yard sale program goes through on the road and we're ultimately able to purchase it from the town. But until then, it will be by virtue of license. I think you've done this in other locations. I believe there was one out on Baxter Road that you did probably six months ago.
You have the license in hand?
Yes, we have the license in hand.
And obviously it states you can put the house on it or do whatever you want with it?
Yes.
Any questions? We saw this before. Anybody in the audience want to talk about this? Go ahead. Just come up and identify yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Irene Schreiber. We are Butters. And we have-
Can you tell us where you are, though?
Could you move the microphone closer to your mouth? I can't hear you.
How's that? How's that? Okay, we're 22 Sheep Pond Road. We're directly behind where the Frazzas want to move their house. If you look on the map, we are-
I see it.
Actually, I guess it's either lot 22, it's 30, 63-31. Do you see it on the map?
I see it, yep.
We see it, yep.
Okay. They're going to be moving, they're supposed to be moving their house onto the road, which is right in front of our house. Our driveway comes right, will be coming right out at their garage. You know, it is going to be so close, I just can't believe that they would even enter the idea of moving the house here when there's so little frontage to begin with. They said that they just lost another six feet in the last week or two. There's so little land there and it's, it's just seems to me like it's just a waste. But anyways, my other issues are, first of all, we were never notified about them taking the Sheep Pond land. I'm wondering if that should have been, if that should have happened. We got no notice of it at all. We got one, one letter in the mail saying that they were planning on doing this and notifying us of this meeting. One of the reasons, another reason that we really don't want this house to be moved where it is, is it, like I said, it's right at the end of our driveway. I can see that they want to move it. I feel badly that they're, they have to move it. You know, we've, they've been our neighbors for a very long time. But to move it right to the end of our driveway seems to be a ridiculous thing. The house next to us, that would be 6332, their home is way back at the end of their property. Ours is right in the front of our property. It would seem to me that it would make more sense to actually move, if they were to move their house a little bit closer and not so much on the road and perhaps use the road as their new septic area or whatever, it would certainly allow us to still have a view. And I think it would make things a lot more reasonable for, for us and for our other neighbors. I would also like to see if they're going to be moving that house, that they filled, there's a gully there. There's the beach, a little bit of a dune, and then a gully. And that's right in front of our house. And that is where the water comes when there are storms. I'm hoping that if they do do this, that they're going to fill that in. And what kind of elevation is, is there going to be there? I would really like to see that as in a butter. So. On another note, cleaning up the beach. There has been so much going on in that area. Ratner's house went into the ocean a couple of years ago. There's still debris on, on the beaches there. And we really thought that he was supposed to be responsible for cleaning that up, but it is still there. There are still sandbags. There are still pieces of concrete and wires and tubes that are coming out from the beach. And I, if this is done, I would want to make sure that all of that is cleaned up from the Frazzer's old location. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
Do we have any questions at this point?
No.
No, thank you. Go ahead.
I can respond to a couple of points.
Sure. Or do you want to ask a question?
Go, go ahead and ask. Go ahead and-
I have a question regarding the license. Is there a time limit on the license?
No. If the license were ever revoked, we'd be responsible for demolishing the house. There's no, we looked into the possibilities of moving it, but we can't get it over the bridge. The, we're not going into the portion of Sheep Common, Sheep Pond that's used. That, I'm going to get the directions wrong, but the-
East-west?
The east-west, we're not going into. It's the north-south piece that used to run down to Ratner's that we would be going into. And our effort was to put it, the building, A, as far away from where the erosion is coming. It's coming, as you can probably tell from the plan, at kind of an angle, but also to put it in between the two houses. So the road eventually is going to wash out completely. And what Andrew Vorsak Planning is telling me is that he wants to relocate all of the driveways so that they're on the road that now runs behind what was behind the, the other Schreiber's property and this Schreiber and the property in between. We're not planning to put any, any fill. We have to put it on piers. We've been to the con-con.
Okay, so that part of Sheep Pond Road is not used anymore, the north or the east-west, you know, whichever one you're, you're going on, correct?
Correct. The one that runs down to the water.
That's to our house.
No, no.
No, I don't think so. Unless you're at, on the beach.
Where they're planning to move the house will be directly across from our driveway.
Right.
Right.
Nine feet.
Sarah?
Yeah.
It looks to me like that the road doesn't service anyone anymore.
That's correct.
Except foot traffic?
That's correct.
And there's still be 12 feet for foot traffic.
Correct. That's right. Do you have the plan in front of you?
Yeah, we do.
You're welcome to come down and look at this.
Yes, I would like-
This is, this is still usable, but this section is not usable. That's the foot traffic.
Right.
And then your driveway is, looks like it's further-
My driveway is right here, right at the edge of our property. So it's in our house, it's right here in the sea.
No, it shows here. It's on the opposite side of the apartment.
Yes, but that's their lot. This is the road.
Yes, but the road that we're going in is over here.
No, no, the road is right here.
No, that's not where we're going.
So this little, little-
No, this is the road here. Isn't this section right here? That road right there?
Goes out to the ocean, right.
Right.
That's where we're-
That's where they're going.
And you're going, my house is right here, okay?
It's not where it shows.
It's not shows on the-
It's on the other corner.
You're over here. And there's a road here that goes into the conservation fund.
That's the dotted line.
And the dotted line, this road, here, and this down is here.
Yeah, but we're, we're south of that.
We're over here.
No, according to this, it's not here.
It's certainly going to be visible from your house.
Oh, it's visible, but it's not in front of the house.
It's not right in front of your house. They tried to position this so that it was between these two buildings, is what Sarah was explaining.
Let me show you. I took this picture.
Do you put it in the center so that-
Okay. This is their, this is their house. This is the end of my driveway. It's going to be right there.
So you will lose part of your view while that house is there.
I will lose a lot of the view. Let me show you the house. This is the house.
Well, but you lost this part of the view anyway, so you're, you're losing that the same view.
Right, you're gaining the view on the other side of the house.
You're going to see view as well.
My driveway is going to come right to the, to their garage. And it's going to be right smack down there. And I'm just asking that they move the house a little bit over. Just bring it to where this, this line is. If they want to use that property, that big road for their septic or something. You know, it, it-
I, I think the tough thing is that if the bank is eroding in this direction, they obviously want to get as far, as far away from the erosion as they can.
If you look, if you look actually on the, oh, yeah, okay. This house, this is our property here. This house, the house on this property is way back here. So to have it a little bit more in front of their house, it's not going to be an issue for them. But for us, the house is very close. So it's going to be really, really close. And their house is way at the end of the property.
Do you have the arrow photo? If you can pull up the arrow.
Can I just make a point? It has to be that close. The road itself, Sheep Pond Road, is 33 feet wide.
Well, it's certainly getting closer.
We're definitely getting closer.
So that's not-
This is the house next door. If they're going to bring this house right here into this road, so it's going to be right here. It's going to be right here. So they're saying, they're saying, maybe move, kept it back just a little bit. See, because this house is back so far.
There you go. Now slide it over to the other house.
But you see what I'm talking about? This is our house. That house is going to be right here. And it's a big house, which you could see. It's a two-story, great big house. This house back there is so far back. And this house is also elevated. So they're going to be seeing above this house. Ours is on a, on a ground.
I think, I think we get the situation. Let us discuss.
We have a larger, a smaller version.
Okay.
And I, I know they have to move the house. And I feel badly that they have to do that, but I don't think they have to move it right in front of our house. You know, even if a matter of 10 feet, even, even if they were just to take it to the edge of their existing property and use the, the access road for the new septic or something.
Where is the septic going, Sarah?
The septic is going to have to go either in here or over here.
It's going to go in the road, right?
Sheep Pond, yeah, that's the old place. So they could do that.
So it's going to be in the road anyway?
It could be.
Yeah.
I think.
And I mean, you certainly would make the thing, we, we've kind of had an issue out there, you know. Two years ago, they put in the road behind our house because of the erosion in front, you know, that corner way. So the house, the road is so close to my house, it would practically be sort of Duncan Donn's golf, because of my contingent. You know, we know. And now we have this. I mean, it's just kind of-
Okay. Like I said, I think we get it. So let's talk about it.
Nobody's going to be particularly happy in the next 10 years up there.
I know. I mean, we're all facing, we've, no. I mean, we've had 30 years, they've had 30 years.
You're lucky you've got some depth.
They've got 30, well, that's, that's an issue too. I don't want to have to move my house because they- I don't want to have to move my house because they moved their house.
No, and I'm not suggesting you would do that. And I, I realize that any time a building gets closer to somebody's house in an area like this, it's human nature for not to be happy about it. These people obviously have their backs up against the wall.
I know. But, I mean, I'm just talking about a little bit of space to move that so it's not right in front of our, I mean, I don't want to have to drive on my driveways to their garage. And, you know, we love it out here. It's a great place, but, but, you know, you know, we're all looking at erosion down the road, and it's going to happen to us all.
So what, what do you think? So, go ahead.
Just have one question for Sarah. Sarah, as you client entertain other options, perhaps maybe moving 27 feet, I guess, to the, yes, to the east?
If we go too much further east because of the way the erosion is coming, I'm not sure that we really are going to gain all that much. And then we do, I think, end up potentially with an issue with the, with the septic system. And then we're also running into, our, our plan, the reason that we went where we went was it was between the two houses.
Can I say something?
Yep.
Being between the two houses, this brings us so close to our house, it's really...
I think no matter what, it's going to be close to your house.
It's going to be close to our house, but it doesn't have to be...
As close.
As close.
I got it.
And I think the, the other house is back so far, and it's up at a higher level, that it's not going to really make that much difference to them if the house is 20 feet in one direction or the other.
Okay.
So Sarah, can I ask you, why did you feel like pulling it all the way to this location? And why not stop? You, you did it just because you thought it was beneficial to both of the properties?
And because it got it as far, as far away as we could possibly go. With the exception of, and the Frozzers were offered the possibility of moving further north into Sheep Pond Road because the planning department plans to shut down that portion of Sheep Pond Road, and we turned that down because we thought it would be disruptive to the neighborhood. But ultimately...
The additional 12 feet? You're talking about the 12-foot strip?
No, I'm talking about going into...
Oh, they're going to take that whole thing and...
They're going to get rid of Sheep Pond Road entirely and divvy up that 33-foot-wide road at some point in the, in the reasonably near future because they want the driveways to start coming in from the new road that they cut into the north of all those properties. And they're ultimately going to be forced to do that as the, as the erosion encroaches. But we, we felt that that was...
How, how, how will the Frozzers gain access if Sheep Pond Road is gone?
Yeah, that's going to be a problem.
Yeah?
Yeah. No, it's going to be, they're going to be gone eventually. I mean, that's what's going to happen. They're going to be demolished.
Well, it doesn't sound like that plan is viable.
And gone.
Because they don't have access, so...
I think they, in real estate school...
No, they will have...
They made easement by necessity.
The way they'll have access is that, Mr. Tool, the way they'll have access is that when you, when they shut the road down and they take, in the yard sale program, what they do, they take the road, they abandon it, they divide it in half. You buy your half, then you have access along your half just by virtue of the fact that you now own it to wherever your nearest point of access is. So they'd continue to have access until the ocean came and took it away, at which point they're going to have to...
Well, they would only have access to the end, they would only be able to buy...
To the end of the road.
To the corner of their lot.
Correct. And then there'd be an easement that would continue to the, anyway.
Well, let's assume the town...
We're not, anyway, we're not doing that now anyway, so...
Yeah, we don't have to go there. What's the pleasure, I mean, of the board? Are we okay with it moving to where it's going? Do we want to see a compromised position? I mean, it's probably not that much different mathematically.
Do you want me to come back in January with a plan that plots out the driveway of the Schreiber's and their house and actually gives you some distances? And I'd be happy to do that.
And show their entire lot?
Well, I'm not going to survey, I'm not going to survey their entire lot, but I could certainly have it put on paper and locate the house and show you their driveway.
Could you also play up some other options, perhaps maybe 10 feet over to the... Some compromise.
Yeah, some sort of compromise.
Yeah, I can look, I can look at that. I mean, I, I don't want to just, we can look at it.
Is the house up in the air as we speak?
Yes, it had to come, it had to, it was about to...
It's, is it in this location?
No.
Where is it?
I'll show you here.
Relative.
Can I just object to the use of the iPad? Any evidence that comes in at the hearing is supposed to be submitted into the file, so...
I'm sure, sure the neighbors were not aware of that.
I know, but I'm just, I don't mind if you look at it, but I just think we need to be...
Well, you just asked about the house.
We, I'll go out there and look. Okay. Because Sarah's right. You know, arguably, we should all be able to look at it at the same time. Sarah should be able to look at it.
And it needs to go into the file.
It needs to go into the file. Not really, I, I just wondered where the house, so can you tell me on a plan where the house is now, approximately?
No. I can't. I have no idea. It's up on, it's up on cribbing.
Okay, that's fine, Tool. I didn't want to know. So anyway, we back to... I think we're going to possibly entertain the option of continuing to the next meeting. And hopefully Sarah will be able to furnish us with some other options, maybe 10 feet over, 20 feet over, and some clear, I guess, everything clearly marked so we can...
Some illustration.
Some sort of illustration.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'm okay with that if everyone else is.
I am.
Okay?
Thank you.
So just seconded it. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye. So that's January 22nd, just for your information, January 22nd. I am curious, Eleanor, this, this, I should have asked Sarah, but she ran away. On a license thing, is that noticed?
Licenses are not noticed, but it was, it did go before the board's election, and it was on the agenda, which is published. So in that sense, if you were paying attention, then you were...
If you regularly read the...
If you look in the paper...
If you are so bored.
Yeah, if you're so bored.
That's odd to me, but...
Yard sales are...
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on. We good to hear this board? Somersault LLC, 13 West Dover, 66-14.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, I'm Representative of Somersault LLC. My client is before you today to request special permit, please, to change the use of a pre-existing non-conforming structure from the studio to a residential use, which is converting it to a second dwelling, which is allowed by right in all zoning districts. The locust has two structures on it. As you can see from the site plan, a pre-existing non-conforming main structure, which is non-conforming with respect to side yard setback, being 1.6 feet from the side yard setback, and a district that requires a 5-foot setback. And the studio is approximately 3 feet from the side yard setback, and 3.1 depth of the studio is 3.1 feet from the rear yard setback. Both structures, well, the primary dwelling precedes the adoption of zoning by law. From, I presented information to you in the packet about this shed that has more included a two-story studio.
A two-story dwelling?
Right now it's a studio.
Permitted it as a studio.
Permitted as a studio, all, yes, and, you know...
And this is the structure on the right hand side of the lot?
That's, that's correct, yes. And I say, studio, now, currently has in it a bedroom, a bathroom, a loft, a living area, and a kitchen. However, through all the building department files, I mean, there's all those certificates about, and so I do indicate that it's not a true limitation. My client recently purchased this property, and has several, people have been living in the studio, affected illegally for the last, I think, 15 years. And so rather than skirt the law, we'd rather have it, bring the, bring the property up to code, do all the necessary interior improvements to legally have it be in second dwelling.
So have you already gone to the planning board?
Yes, we went on Monday, and the, it's conditional approval upon the driveway, actually, it's the existing driveway, so I have the evidence that it is, it doesn't meet the dimensional requirements of the bylaw. We have to prove that as either grandfather, that it is the adoption, or modified and such, that it meets 717 code interest. But there, with respect to the studio, where the proposed change of use to, change of use to the dwelling, there will be no change in footprint. There's going to be no exterior alterations, nothing on the outside is going to change at all. Whatever work is still available to bring it up to code will all be done.
So the only relief you're asking for a year is, is to go from studio to second dwelling to a 12?
That's correct. And, and if this, and if this studio were not located in the setbacks, it would not be before you. And additionally, any, should my client in the future decide to make any alteration, exterior alterations, without any improvement or, or, before Eleanor's zoning administrator decision, because it is in the setback, it is a non-conforming structure.
Okay.
So, so you're asking for two different types of relief?
Just one, change of use.
Okay, so being in the setback, your grandfather?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, gotcha. And as, as a very strict requirement, see that one.
Anybody in the audience? Yep. Please identify yourself at the mic. Thank you.
I'm Kathy Ward, and I'm on Silver Street. I'm in a butter to this property. And the question that I have is about the parking. If this becomes an apartment, where are the people going to park? Because what, a year or so ago, there was a decision made to grandfather the Westover Street into the Silver Street parking lot, and that's become a commercial parking lot now. It's very disturbing to neighbors when you drive down there and all you see are these commercial trucks that I'm told have permits to park there. And if this is going to be where there are going to be more than one car, it's going to be a parking issue because that lot is filled. All summer long, it's filled today. If you go by there today, there are painters' trucks, there are air conditioning trucks, there are construction trucks, all sorts of commercial vehicles. And so that's, that's my concern, is there was an inch that was given, and is this going to give it a mile to just make it a commercial area where it's a residential area?
Sure, I, I can address the parking. While at the planning board, we also received a second curb cut. There is a separate, independent curb cut for this.
Could I hear? I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, there, there's a second curb cut proposed here.
Is that the rectangle that's on the site plan?
That's correct.
So they're, they're providing off-street parking?
Parking space.
So they won't be arguably using, I'm cur, curious, this is a semi-non sequitur. So this, that parking lot, is it town parking lot?
Silver Street lot?
Yeah.
Yes, it's a town...
And anybody can park there now?
Well...
Do you need a permit?
You need a permit to park there overnight, and it was, our street, Silver Street, was the last street, and I'm bad on directions, so it would be going out of town. Our street, Silver Street, was the last street. Dover Street was not included in being able to do overnight parking in that lot. You could not get a permit.
If you had, if you lived in that area?
If you, you had, you have to show all the residential things. And so last year, as an experiment, they included that Dover Street. And what it has done is just made a commercial lot out of that in a residential area, and it's very disturbing. There, there's garbage that's left in there. I mean, we go down and pick it up. I mean, it's not...
How, how does making Dover part of the area make it commercial? I mean...
I don't understand it. I truly, I mean, it wasn't my decision, and I'm only an observer, when I, because Silver's a one-way, so for me to go anywhere in town, I have to go down by that lot. So I see it any time I get in my car, I go out, and I observed it again today. But there are trucks that are down there. I've taken pictures, I've sent it to, see it, click it physically. They say they've sent it to the police, they have a permit for these trucks. Well, it's a different kind of permit than we have on our cars. So I don't know the dynamics of it. I'm not trying to cause a problem for anybody. I'm just trying to preserve a residential area as a residential area.
Unfortunately, I, I don't think these, you know, are really related because they're providing parking for their lot, and we're sympathetic. I don't know, and it sounds like you've done what you could to get the right people to take a look at this. But this particular application, they've provided the required parking, and...
And I see that, but I, all I had was this letter. I've been traveling, I got home, and if not, had to go look at the map. And if they're providing parking, that's one thing, but if it's going to become a commercial place, then that's a bothersome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So it's a pleasure.
So what are you going to ask?
I was going to say, did anybody else want to talk? No?
Make a motion to approve the application as requested.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. All righty. Joanne and Timothy Smead, 10 May Hugh Road, 68-14. For the...
Detective Holstein, return to the alcatraz. We're here seeking special permit related to validate setback intrusions of the front yard, side yard steps. The house was built in 1996, and the steps have been there since that time. They were not shown on a survey that was submitted to the building department with the certificate of occupancy.
Is that the Schigruh plan?
That's correct. You see, they're not shown on the front and on the side, so there had to have been obviously a way to get in and out of the house. At first I thought, well, maybe they didn't show decks or steps or porches at the time, but if you see in the rear, there's the rear steps are shown on that old survey. And this came up on, I'm up 8 o'clock today, and I'm coming closing. And I believe we fall under the category of that provision of the bylaw, that we're not greater than 5 feet into the required yard and not closer than 4 feet from the lot line.
And the current owner didn't add, like, the, the, a door and whatnot coming onto Winoma Way? There was always the door there?
That's correct.
It looks like the front door of the house. Well, maybe not.
And this is what they kind of, I mean, if you want to see this picture, kind of what they look like, the doors are a couple of feet off the, off the road.
Is there just a picture of the house? No?
Yeah, I do have a picture of the house. It's just, I'm looking sheet, I mean, it's 2005, before my client bought it, and it shows it.
Check. Looks like the doors.
That's, that's your, that's your, shows it. Same place. I don't know how we would...
That's the back, right? That's this diagonal deck, that's this door.
I don't know how we direct the intrusion because you can see the 35-foot front area. I don't know how we direct the intrusion because you can see the 35-foot front area.
So, is it the front and the side?
That's correct.
So, Winoma Way side as well as the May Hugh Road?
That's correct.
And so, on Winoma Way, it's over by how much?
Let's see, we're supposed to be 10 feet or 5.6.
Oh, well, so totally. And in the front?
We're supposed to be 35 feet, and it's 33.7.
The house was built in 97?
96 was the permit COA position, and 97.
So, we can assume that this was like the 97, right?
Well, we could. Not necessarily. Maybe there wasn't a door on the Winoma Way side, and it was put in in 2002 by the current owner.
We didn't own it then, we bought it in, I think, 2006 or something.
I just made up.
A year, but just because we...
I'm simply saying that it would be nice to have the building permit application that showed that that door was always there, and Mr. Chagru maybe made a mistake and didn't notice it back in the day.
How long is your client on it?
Uh, let's see.
2007, you said, or something?
Wasn't it 2005?
I mean, wasn't there an Asbeld done when they bought it?
No, they paid cash, and they just relied on the Asbeld with the COA.
So, this is the door?
Are they trying to do work now?
No, it just came up as part of the closing, and the buyer wanted us to get relief for it. And he's concerned if he goes to get a building permit for something else, that he's going to get...
When's the closing? The reason I ask is if we can get a plan for the next meeting, it might help your application.
Well, our closing was supposed to be last month. Let me ask you this. I know you have one more matter after me. I mean, I'm happy to run across to the plus building and see what I can find.
Sure. Because this is the door in question. This is the closest door. I don't really have a problem with the one to May Hugh Lane because it's a foot. But this is, you know, the entire stoop and everything is in the setback.
You know, I'm not going to cast dispersions on somebody who's not here, but that's a big old mission, I think, in 97. So, maybe that was not even there, the door and the stoop.
My guess would be, just a guess, that he's not, he didn't put the stoop down because he realized that it wasn't going to pass with the stoop. He's not mentioning anything about the stoop because what you see is conformal.
It wasn't there.
And he probably did.
He probably didn't own the house.
Yeah. Anyway, why don't you just, well, we'll take a brief, we'll continue this for 10 minutes, if you will.
It's the front door, so it would...
So, we're just going to, that's a temporary continuance, if you will. So, we'll move on to Deborah Killen, Lothian Trustee, Lobster Pot Nominee Trust, 14 Easy Streets, 69 14, for the African. This being...
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So, I will give you, hopefully, the very brief version. Those of you who sat on this last month may recall this...
Time out for one second, sorry. But maybe the people that sat on this should sit on it again. And I did it.
I think Mark did.
Yeah, you want to do that, Mark? And Susan?
Sure.
Because I have no...
I have the certificates of packets you can see.
Lisa, Kira, Mark, Susan, and Jeff.
That's where you want the first option.
Lisa, Susan, Mark, and Jeff.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, sorry, Stephen.
No, no problem.
Go ahead.
Why is it, why here?
So, the Lobster Pot Building, essentially down at the Easy Street Basin, is being renovated. You provided relief for that to happen at your last meeting. And what we have done since then, one of the pieces, one of the parts of relief that my client originally asked for was to take advantage of the recent change in the zoning that allows for structures to be taller than 30 feet if they, if that, up to 35 feet if that is not, if that is consistent with what's in the area and doesn't have any detrimental effect. And what we're dealing with here is a building that, because it's in the flood zone, needs to be raised up when it's renovated. My client is taking, so the relief that was granted, we had originally asked for 35 feet, and we thought that we could do it at 3110. And so, we asked you, we lowered the request down to 32 feet to give ourselves a little wiggle room. But now, we are going through, having gone through the complete process at the HTC and more engineering, think that we need slightly more than 32 feet. And so, we're asking you to revise the prior decision to go to 33 feet. And the reason why is that my client is taking a lot of steps and expenses to lower the building, essentially by waterproofing four feet so that the floor is lower than it would have to be if we weren't doing that. But we can only put the doors and windows at a certain place, you know, without being excessive. So, you can't, you can't just make it all up by going down. And what we figured out since then is that we now have the official HTC approval, and we also have done significant engineering. And one of the things that we're looking at is going from eight-by-tens to engineered beams that are probably 14 inches. And so, the floor span is now, you know, increased by six inches in two places. And so, we're trying to make up for that every which way we can. And, you know, you can only lower the ceiling so much. I mean, we could, but...
What is the ceiling height?
We're looking at currently 8'4" at the first floor and 7'7" on the second floor. And the third floor is a pitch, so it's 6'7" at the bottom of the dormer. And then, you know, we don't know where the tray will be, but somewhere between the bottom of the dormer is at 6'7". So, we could potentially try to shrink that, but we think that really there's a nominal difference between the 33 feet and the 32 feet. And it's the same standard for relief. So, we'd prefer to not make up that whole foot by just eating more ceiling. We've already eaten as much as we think we can in engineering and design. And so, my client would, and we think that if we had asked for the 33 feet, the first time, you potentially would have given it, but we just have better numbers to work with now. And it's still two feet less than the bylaw allows for.
Does anybody have any questions?
Jonathan, what's the head height for your first-floor windows?
70.
S 1.1.
Pretty standard.
Yeah, I was just wondering if they're being pushed out because of the floodproofing that you're doing for the floor system?
Well, what we've done in that situation when you're floodproofing is you're actually allowed, the floodproof foundation has to come up to a certain point. At this point, it's five foot five above the current first-floor deck. But in order to push all this down, we're actually, as the doors are relieved into that foundation, we're also now relieving the windows into that foundation. So, we really, you know, the windows initially were a little too squatty based on that, so we elongated those, we're cutting them in, and, you know, we just, we really worked every possible way to, you know, get this down into the ground for a number of reasons. If, A, we don't want the building to really be, you know, this large structure, you know, sitting on a hill where all the other buildings currently are. I mean, ultimately, that's all probably going to change over time. But the other thing is, it does, it allows us to keep it down, and it helps us in other ways, too, with handicap access. And it's a win-win situation all the way, but we have, we are making every effort to keep it as low as possible.
Thank you.
And, you know, the engineering really just has driven the number just a little bit higher than I anticipated. Thank you.
Yeah. So, you know, and I'd also like to point out that my client is wedged in between buildings like the Drayland and other buildings that are significantly taller. So, it would not be disproportionate or at a place to go, you know, from 32 feet to 33.
What was the HTC approval, Richi, I said? Do we know?
Who we currently, Mark, at where we have it, which is just short of 32 feet.
But what, we haven't gone back to the HTC?
Oh, okay, so you don't have your amended COA from the HTC at this point?
Right, yeah.
So, the building section shows the floor dropped from the top of the slab. Is that what I'm seeing? The ceiling height dimension is taken from, like, down in the slab, and it says 9'5", on the first floor?
Look at that, Lisa?
On this drawing that we just pulled up on the iPad, the ceiling height dimension is taken down from...
Oh, well, no.
This is, it's this drawing that's blown up.
Okay. So, well, this is probably, Stephen, is this, I guess, the prior file?
That's the...
That was what's in a packet.
The prior approval. Okay, so probably, oh, thank you so much. All right.
Oh, this is the prior approval?
Lisa, what's your question now?
Well, you were saying that the ceiling heights were 8'4", and I was just curious about that because this is 9'6", but it's taken down into the slab.
Into the 12-inch slab.
Yeah, this was probably, this was probably existing, maybe some of these existing. Yeah, that's not, right now, it's 8'4", Lisa, from the slab to here.
Right. But where's the floor?
This is the floor.
Okay. The floor is at the top of the slab, even though the door is down further?
Yeah, I think that there are probably some drawing errors, maybe, in that.
Okay.
But that would be, yeah, we could certainly submit the current plan based on your decision, you know, so that we have it to work on. But we are, you know, very, we're beyond confident that we'd be having the extra relief.
And you're confident that the HTC is going to give you that relief?
Well, we never know about that. But I believe, I believe so.
Well, and if they don't, then, you know, it is what it is.
Right.
What does your first floor have to be at?
Lisa, and it's really directly related to how we handle this 5'5" measurement, which is where our foundation has to be based on FEMA flood numbers. So, really, at that point, it's how far we can push the doors and the windows down into that to bring ourselves. At this point, we're really, honestly, we're about more or less 18 inches above the existing first floor right now, which really isn't that much.
Right.
Normally, if we didn't, by floodproofing, we have to come up with that wall a foot higher than we normally would. If we didn't floodproof, that whole building would basically be four foot four, the first floor would be four foot four above the existing floor right now. And you can imagine, even just a two-story building, you would be so high up in the air.
It looked like the other building that was really had on Washington Street.
It would just look ridiculous.
Yeah. I was actually surprised that one got approved at the HTC. Okay.
So, I think when we, when we asked for 32 feet, we didn't have as much engineering as we do now, and we're in a better position to come down from the 35 that we originally asked for, but still would like to make up that engineering, those engineered beams with a little additional space.
Is there anybody here to speak to this? Any other questions? I mean, does, do you feel like, is there any, the reason not to wait for the HTC is because of timing, so that we could actually attach your HTC approval to a certificate, which we often do?
Are you going to build this year, 2015?
Yep. We have a, we currently have an exploratory permit filed at the moment, and so we can get going and get the building, you know, ready for lifting and moving.
I don't know if that's an issue for everybody, but oftentimes, we do attach an approval, you know, to be more specific about the heights, but...
Certainly would be helpful.
Well, I mean...
Well, our decision would be not to exceed 33 feet in height.
Right.
Discussion.
Right. And then, obviously, we wouldn't be able to get it. If the HTC lowered it to 32.6 or something, we'd be stuck with whoever's lower.
You'd have to comply with the lowest standard requirement.
That's right.
I'll make a motion to grant the relief as requested for, is it, was this a modification to your special permit?
Yes.
To the special permit to allow the Richi to go up maximum one foot higher than previously approved to 33 feet?
Okay, is there a second?
A second, Deb.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As much as fun as it usually is to come back after and say, we built it to 32.7 and...
I think we'd have held you to a higher standard.
Thank you.
So, that was it, right?
Unless Patricia comes back.
Oh, yeah, Patricia. I forgot Patricia. All right, we'll give her a few minutes.
Can we start talking about the other stuff anymore?
Sure. The other business?
Here she is.
She's a runner.
Yeah. I should go sit.
I guess I'm off at this time.
And you have the building permit application?
Yep.
Yeah, that's the door.
That's the door?
Mm-hmm.
Because there's the diagonal deck.
Yeah, I find mine...
So...
Does it mention certificate number 293? They don't say it on there.
Would you state what you're saying?
We're looking at a building permit application and a set of drawings that were approved by the HTC on, I can't read that date, something...
96, 10/22/96.
Okay. See, I thought it was upside down. I thought it was '01.
That's the, the building apartment.
And it shows the door and stoop?
Oh, I'm sorry. Right, that's approved.
It shows the door and stoop?
It shows the door and stoop.
Okay.
Do we have another, do we have the side elevation?
It shows one less step.
Right. I'm wondering what they're showing. It shows, looks, it's drawn as granite steps.
Right.
Wait, back then, you probably, you got away with it.
Which I think back then, granite steps in the setback were allowed.
Allowed, right?
Landscaping, right?
Well, there was a period of time where that was interpreted that way.
But nothing, there are no steps shown on any of the floor plans.
Well, there's just that.
One, but nothing out of, that door is this door, right?
Yeah. That door you jumped out of.
So, a CO really would have been...
I don't know how a CO would have been issued.
Yeah.
Who signed it, Jack Dunn?
Well, but the Asbeld shows there were other doors you could get out of.
Well, but, but, but he might have interpreted that if they were granite steps, that they could have, that he didn't show them because they weren't considered a structure on the Asbeld, and then Jack signed it.
So, the crux of the issue seems to be, do we have an issue with the fact that the stoop was built after the CO was issued? It's closer than the original plan, which even with the granite steps...
Would still have been...
Would have been in the setback, but not nearly as much.
But again, at that point, they interpreted the granite steps as being landscape items.
Right.
Right.
I don't have an issue with that. Is nobody here to speak? Patty, you're not, you're just here to entertain yourself?
Yes.
I don't have a big issue with it.
What are you doing here?
It's a little funky, certainly, because it basically was built illegally.
Well, I think there are probably steps when the building inspector inspected the building.
So, they granite, they were granite.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure about that, but he didn't have access to an Asbeld when he did his final inspection.
Well, didn't he have access to the Chagru Asbeld?
No, because you don't have to have the Asbeld when you get your final.
Yeah, that doesn't, no.
That's not...
And that doesn't show the steps.
So, he walked around the building, he saw it, he signed it off, and then this came in after, not showing the steps.
I'm a little more cynical than that, I guess. But I can, it is Christmas. Don't put that in there.
The chairman, the chairman is allowed to make a motion.
I'm not making a motion. Don't be looking at your phone, dude, that's...
I'm just trying to enter the meeting date for that.
You know, seems a little funky to me, but I can see my...
I mean, what's the alternative? That they'd have to pick the house up and move it or get rid of the door?
Yeah.
Right, they don't really have an option. They don't have an option to put granite steps back there.
Well, no one ever has an option. No one ever comes in and says, I get some great options, but that's why, you know, that's why they're here. They supposedly have no option. I mean, I'm not advocating for it, but there are, there's...
They could get rid of the door.
There's another way to get out of that building that meets the code.
Well, this one does not, this is still an infraction.
Well, you're right.
You could see your way to...
You could also indent the stair. You could make this compliant.
Yes, you could. Right.
I'm just saying. It is just, it is, it's a funky little area out there, tiny little lots.
We didn't get any letters, right?
Just keep, keep it all in mind when the next person can.
That's what I'm afraid of.
Right, and since you didn't allow that, that other depth to be.
Well, what's the other, what's the ten-year curative statute?
I don't think you can, I don't think the ten-year curative statute, um, is, you can build something illegally and then ten years later it's blessed. Oh, that's.
You don't know what you have built. No, it's ten years from the certificate of occupancy, right? If, if you have a CO for ten years, it should be blessed.
Yeah, it is.
It's not that if you wait and then you don't go for your CO and it's like, oh, but I built the house ten years ago. They've had a CO, right?
Right, I think this falls on the, uh, the inspector.
Right.
If you, if you see a door and there's no stairs there and you looked around, you've done a walk around the house and you didn't make a note of it then, that there's no stairs?
I think the stairs were there and then when the Asbeld came in.
But maybe he did make a note of the fact that there were no stairs. There were other egresses out of there and he said, you know, the, the door was screwed shut. It's a declaration. The HTC made us put a door there. We weren't going to use it.
Back in those days, they were also prone to maybe note COs if they have funky circumstances, you know, not burning meditation or work alone, you know what I mean?
Like, don't use the front door on the CO? I don't.
Well, maybe, maybe you're right though.
We've seen some funk, but come on.
I think the idea that the agency required a front door and that elevation makes a certain amount of sense, and that could have been the situation. But I also think that Jack could have gone out there, done his, done his inspection and then, you know, three weeks later, a month later, the Asbeld comes in. He doesn't remember. He's looking at the thing.
No, I don't.
Steps in the side.
I think the leg.
Yeah, and he, and he signs the CO.
Well, the other thing is, Shigru gave him a.
A stamped thing.
Yeah, that shows that, that basically it's in compliance. Because he didn't put the steps on. He didn't measure the steps.
Oh, but I, I, I have greater faith than Jack that there were no steps there. And then he got the Asbeld and matched his memory. And then somebody after they got the CO put the steps on.
I totally discount the granite disappearing.
Yeah, I did just.
I mean, listen, do you think it could have worn out?
Could have been sold.
I don't see it in the file.
It got out. Like a one-eighty screw.
So the CO was given in nine-seven.
Right, after Shigru's, uh.
Yeah.
I'm saying that the steps weren't there.
Anyway, why don't you guys vote?
I, I, I will, I will say this. I think the only reason why I would vote in favor of this is because they have had a CO signed off. It's been ten years, and that's the leg that, uh, I think that this applicant, uh, can stand on.
Well, I, I would normally agree with you if the steps were shown, but steps weren't shown on the Asbeld.
Well, we don't have that, we don't know that. And we got.
Oh, you know they weren't shown and.
But there was an error then on the part of the building department for signing off the CO.
Exactly.
Not necessarily, but, you know, it's just me. Let's go. And I think that by us kind of.
I mean, there's no way to forensically.
Right.
Figure out what actually happened. We can, I think we've narrowed it down to one of two things.
We could ask Steve Bakers.
The owner.
He was the, he was the builder.
We could do a carbon dating on that foot there, maybe.
You could, you could give an affidavit. You could do some aerials. I don't know how well they would show.
Not that interested.
I think by us standing by the, the ten-year, uh, the CO was signed off, it also, uh, avoids other people coming in here and using that loophole like, hey, you guys okayed them. So hopefully.
Oh, but again, the CO, I, I, I hear your argument, but I don't think it holds much water because the CO didn't bless the steps. The steps weren't on the CO. They weren't on the plot plan. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to go to vote, but, you know, not, you know, and you can rest easy however you want, but it doesn't hold water.
He does show one step on the plot plan, so maybe.
In the back.
In the back, right.
You give him credit for that, Edward?
I'm just saying, I know somebody's going to come in here, eh, eh, last night. So, let's, let's, uh. Again, someone can make a motion. There's four of you. It only needs four to one.
Thought you were Christmas guys.
So let's vote. Make a motion, somebody.
I'm making a motion to approve the, um, relief, to grant the relief as requested, given the fact that there was a certificate of occupancy granted in nineteen ninety-seven, um, by the building inspector.
Okay, okay, motion's been made in second. Was there anybody in the audience? Patty?
Yeah.
Did you want to talk about this?
No, I wanted to. I'm hoping for that hearing for, for.
You're interested. Um, okay. So all of, any further discussion? All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of us in favor. So you're good to go.
All right, thank you for the recommendation.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. You want other plans too, Eleanor?
Christmas mishmash.
Has been chugging coffee.
Not the few houses on the front level who get granite stuff.
Yeah, I, uh, we don't have to talk about that anymore. Okay, so other business. Do we need to talk about it, Eleanor? Or we, you just let us know that various special interests.
And when you come back in January, hopefully you'll have time to read them. If you have any questions, input can also.
Can you highlight any that, I mean, some of them were sewer district changes, um, was there any zoning highlight?
I only included zoning, but I didn't include all the other.
I noticed that, uh.
Didn't I see this?
Not one of those zoning changes that anyone that actually signs live anywhere near the zoning change, which is very disconcerting.
Well, because I.
Well, maybe they're just concerned citizens.
Yeah, they can just sign to get it on.
Now, you're a dissenter.
It's contagious.
Okay, anyway, we'll, we'll take a look at them.
You're welcome to comment on them now as well. Um, you can also email planning staff.
My, my comment is, I, I don't, I think these zoning changes, these spot zoning changes are, are, make no sense to me whatsoever, where you have your specific lot on Fairgrounds Road and, and I'm just using that as an example. And you get the zoning changed or the sewer district changed. It should be for an area, but that's.
It doesn't sound like there's any.
Makes sense if you go to the meeting where the, these changes are discussed. But I, I, I'm not sure that we can comment too much about, um, without knowing anything about them and why they were brought, why they're being brought to town.
Well, obviously the ones that are located in the LC district that go to the CDT are because they want zero setbacks at thirty-five feet in height.
So, I don't know, I do, I do think, uh, and like when Appleton Road is one district on one side of the road and the other on the other, it makes no sense to me that the lines should be behind the houses, not, not on roads. They shouldn't ever be split on the road.
It's actually three separate.
Yeah, it's insane.
I would ask that you give feedback to, I mean, you can do it through me or directly to the people who hold these together.
We will.
We just shut down Appleton Road.
You'll let us know when the planning board's holding the hands on the changes.
Yes.
Okay, is there any other business?
To approve the schedule, the revised schedule.
I, I, I have to make one other comment. The annual tell me citizens article, to amend section, this is the last one on two forty-five, the definition of tiny house.
Tiny house.
Yeah, this is hilarious. That's actually in the, is that, is that in the bylaw?
I don't think tiny house is.
To amend section two definition as follows, tiny house.
Does, do, do tiny houses have to be substantially below grade?
Not currently, not currently in the.
So this isn't currently and there's somebody wants it in there.
They have a different description or.
A attached structure of less than five hundred square feet containing a single dwelling unit, blah, blah, blah.
So what, why do you need to specify that?
I don't know, I just love the description.
Tiny house.
Anyway, I, I got off subject, I'm sorry.
Zero energy tiny house.
We good with the, uh, meeting schedule so far? January twenty-second being the one that's out of whack a little bit.
What happens to our February meeting? Is it really going to be that close to that January meeting?
If we start shifting it, it's just.
Yeah, let's not go there.
People won't have a chance to respond or anything else like that.
That, that's okay. Let's not.
Are they well? Because I'll still do the notification per, you know, allotted.
This was the best we could do in January, Mark. We just didn't have enough people.
Well, just don't have a meeting.
Some of us go down to Florida and live the good life. While others continue to toil away.
Well, grandpa, grandpa has things he has to do.
This is a cop syrup. Eleanor, do we know when Marcus is coming back?
No, I haven't heard. So for the interrupt, Steve Butler is the main acting CEO. Alan Knoll is his backup. And the third, I can't list. Um, and then we have Brendan, who's the electrical inspector, also doing building inspections, so that we can catch up.
How long has Marcus been out? A lot on that.
I'm sorry to hear that. I, I have no idea.
Yeah, this was a month.
Over a month.
But I didn't know until the meeting.
Well, I know that.
I don't think he's coming back. I mean, I don't, I'm not, I do a job. I mean, that, that, that's, you gotta be under substantial.
Lifestyle changes.
Yeah, I would think medication, lifestyle, I mean, it's horrible, but anyway.
He's too young to.
He's had more, this is.
Yeah, it's hereditary, I think.
Yeah, he's had multiple heart attacks already.
Why don't we adjourn?
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
I'm to page two forty-eight, end of packet.
I second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to offer grandpa Mara our hardest congratulations.
When did the board member, the chair of the board do the Christmas party, the Christmas function?
Is it Mara or?
Yeah, my, my schedule is getting thin.
I would like to know when I get my Christmas bonus from the other board members.
You just got, you just got your pen. What more?